Yes, Stankowski? [S01] Yes. Zebrow? [S01] Here. Student rep Hanson? [S01] Here. All present?
Pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seek approval, item number four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Gorman, second by Baumann, to approve the agenda. Any corrections, changes, or updates? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting, February 15.
I'll make the motion to approve minutes.
I'll second it.
The motion by Zebrow, a second by Kaiser. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I abstain.
Thank you.
I should abstain as well.
All right. Item number six is the public forum. Public forum provides the opportunity to the public to address the board about items or topics that are on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board tonight? Anybody at all? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to item number seven, the student board report.
So our first half of the Marquis High School has gone very well. Our NHS club has been very busy volunteering at the elementary school and athletic programs like Little Tribblers. The FCC LA made a donation of $200 to No Pan hungry from their Valentine's Day cookie sale. DECA, our business club, is heading to internationals, a career conference in Atlanta this April. The multimedia club and tech club are finishing up the town of Virgin sign that will be located at their town hall. Our science Olympia team took first place in anatomy and physiology in late February at UWSP. And last but not least, our winter sports teams have had a notable season with boys and girls basketball being conference champions and hockey making it sectional finals. So we look forward to spring and just in general, this is a season for athletics.
Thank you very much. Item number eight is the consent agenda. Any committees have anything they wish to be pulled out?
We pull future agenda items.
All right. From curriculum and standards, curriculum and instruction, we're going to pull future items out, future agenda items out. On the others, I'll seek a motion to approve.
I'll make them.
I'll second.
I was gonna say, you couldn't get to that by 6:15?
Yeah.
It was 6:00.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
Peter.
Sorry, I don't, I just, I had to.
Okay, all right.
So I apologize, who made the motion and second?
I did.
Motion by Gorman, second by Kaiser, to approve the rest of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Barnes?
The reason, it's pretty strange that we pull future agenda items, but it's our opportunity to update the board that the work we've been doing over the last three months is asking each of our buildings, elementary, high school, middle school, to bring forward to us their curriculum and standards needs, things that have to do in their school, whether it be with staffing or things that they want to do. So we've completed those three updates and have those lists. The next step is we'll be asking Mr. Way, along with the administrators and whoever else he wants to include, to combine that list into a district-wide list of needs and also rank that through their own lens. One additional piece of information that we think is relevant to that is, as individual board members, are there positions, curriculum, needs, generally speaking, these would be initiatives that either had a most likely have a financial component to them that we would like to see in our district? Because once we have that piece of information and the ranking done by Mr. Way and his team, I think the next best step is for us as a board to get together in a separate committee of the whole meeting to work our way through that list and that ranking and make sure that we're not asking our administrative staff to be waiting on something that we don't have any intention of doing, or we can work with that ranking as a board. So that the end product of all this work would be something very similar to the facility needs list where we have, here's the anticipated facility needs, here are the things that we want to do, here's an estimated cost, here's an estimated timeline, and that would be a product that not only this board, but future boards can then work with as things are no longer relevant and can be removed, or when new ideas come up, it can be added, and it can be discussed rapidly as a board as to where those things fit within our priority levels. So didn't want to just pull that on everyone without having, giving people and different board members the opportunity to say, good idea, bad idea, and then also to discuss what's the most effective way, because I think we're getting to where our staff would like to see us get this work done, I think would like to see us. So is the board comfortable with if you have an item, and so we can take the board's ideas? Do we want those shipped to myself, or do they want them sent to Mr. Way, or what's the appropriate way for us to facilitate that?
I think if we sent our ideas to you, if you're willing.
Sure.
To, with a, with an appropriate deadline, and then you could merge together some that might be pretty much the same. That way, I don't know how many people, I don't know how many items people might be sending, but if you could put them in some semblance of a.
And then when, when that's assembled by me, then I will ship that to, probably to Mr. Way and ask if the dollars associated with those things, and what that might cost. So I think I.
And some of them, I mean, the three of us obviously have an idea of what's already, we know it's already been presented, so I'm guessing there will be some overlap and duplication anyway. So maybe you could even let Mr. Way know where there is support for the things that have already come from the three buildings. Let us make sure that we acknowledge all of the administrators who have been involved in that process, even if they're not a building principal, certainly, but other board members, it might be help, or Mr. Way, it might be helpful to know that other board members have buttressed or supported some of the things coming from the buildings themselves.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
Is it reasonable if three weeks from now, I ask for, prior to the next board meeting, maybe even two weeks?
Two, that gives you a couple days and then gives them 10 days or so, 10 calendar days, to begin that process of assemblage and merging.
Is there anybody that doesn't think that's enough time from a board standpoint to communicate those things?
You gotta get.
Two weeks.
Maple's meeting.
And then I'll leave it up to Kevin and Mr. Munoz to find a time, because I think this work would take way too long to do during a regular board meeting for us to go through that list and us to be able to challenge and ask questions of things that are on the list and why they're there.
I agree with that, too.
So.
Are you referring to this list?
Probably not.
No. No, we don't have a list.
No, that's the construction list. We're talking about the curriculum list.
Oh.
It'll look like.
It'll look like that.
It'll be different things.
That's what they're going to be coming to us at curriculum with, and ultimately it'll come to the committee of the whole.
Okay.
It's actually going to come to a committee of the whole.
So timeline-wise, that committee of the whole would probably be shortly after our next board meeting?
Perhaps. I mean, we have a couple of other things, perhaps. Just leave it at that right now. We've got some other things that, including end of the school year, which I realize that's very relevant for the staff as well, all the things that go on, but we've got a couple of other committees that are doing some work that requires some evenings already.
Okay.
So.
Negotiations, and then there's also reorganization at the end of April.
Yes, it might be different.
There's a reorganization on Monday, April 26-ish, right in there.
Yeah. We'll, we'll find a date that makes sense for everybody.
Okay. Well, that is the update on how we're planning on moving forward with that information.
Thank you for the update, Matt.
Thank you.
Any questions for him? Okay. Item number nine is decision and possible discussion, impossible decision, approval of the monthly voucher list.
I'll still move.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Kaiser, second by Hanson. Roll call, please.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebrow?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
All yes.
Item number 10, discussion, impossible decision, acceptance of the monthly treasures report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Kaiser. Roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Stankowski?
Yes.
Zebrow?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes.
Thank you. Item number 11, discussion, school board superintendent communications.
I had five line items in there. I'll just briefly open them a little bit. Spent some time at the elementary school a few weeks back, Dr. Sue Sweet, that was quite a bit of fun. There is a picture in there.
I want to see it.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah, thank you very much. There are more pictures than that, but, and of other people as well.
Geez, I gotta step up next to you.
Not just me, but others.
You ain't dressed up, no.
Mr. Hermaning dressed up, but I am not privy to the pictures, but that's.
Somebody must have some.
Yes, yes. Maybe later. The YCO, SEO and I met to discuss the new contract. We had a good conversation and are looking to prep something for the main meeting. The health insurance subcommittee, we've had to push that meeting a little bit, so this information, when we posted it, we were going to meet and it's, we're waiting on some data. But we're waiting for good reasons. We're trying to improve our positioning. It's a big piece of the budget. We're pretty confident with it, even though some recent numbers haven't been great, but we're looking at that long-term as well. So we're, we feel pretty good about it. There's some meetings in the near future for all of us to look at the health insurance renewal. And that's roughly $3 million, $3.1 million roughly of the budget. RVA, several of us, including myself, Dr. Pittman, Mr. Way, myself, there were several others that were there, at an RVA meeting. It was really good. It was in town here at the RVA location, which is over across from the airport. So there's this, it was good to get some updates, especially some broader understanding of a resource that we're already paying for. We spend about $100,000 a year, give or take, on about 30-some students that are full-time RVA. So those students are still Mozeni School District students, working on a full-time virtual capacity through RVA as our partner. So things are going very well. They're looking to expand some services and there's some other aspects of that as well, but there'll be more on RVA coming in the future. The winter sports team, our student rep definitely mentioned the very successful winter sports season in all respects across the board. So this I pretty much pulled out of that link article, pretty much word for word, and I wrote the link to the community. This is pretty much the same, except at the time of the link article, the girls' hockey team hadn't, hadn't won the state championship yet. Now, that's a co-op, and I bring that up because that's coming up in, in part of our regular agenda, the actual co-op agreement. So we have several students on the team. I should have put a picture in there, because I was actually there when, when they were presented their trophy, when they came in, which was a lot, which was pretty cool, was great for them. And we have several, you know, active players on the team that were highly contributing members to the victory. So we were excited about that. And one thing that also wasn't public at the time that this was posted, just want to congratulate Mr. Lehman on his acceptance yesterday by the school board. I know he's sitting back there. So congratulations on the superintendent position over in Stratford. Congratulations, Dr. Lehman. That was yesterday at the school board. So we'll have more of that in closed session, but congratulations to, to Dr. Lehman. And then once we get through the board meeting tonight, there'll be some information that I've already shared with the board, a release about that, and then we'll start working on timelines, postings, and that sort of thing. So special congratulations to Nate. He's been here eight years. He's done some wonderful things. So very appreciative, Nate. Thank you very much. Congratulations to you and your family. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I think that one girl though won best goalie of the year.
In the state?
Yeah, state.
Right?
Best.
Soft mark, correct?
Chloe Lemke, right?
Uh, Lemke.
Yeah, Chloe Lemke.
Lemke.
Yeah.
Right.
Best goalie in the state.
That's true. Absolutely true. And she's a Mozeni student? That's right. So that was pretty awesome.
That's so cool.
Yeah.
That's so cool.
That was, she had a shutout in the state final, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Shutout, 5-0, I thought.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Empire, so cool.
Thank you. Item 12A, discussion, impossible decision, approval of the revised 2022-2023 school calendar.
This is a technical revision. It's not going to change anything. This has been a popular calendar, especially with the, the full week for hunting and other related activities. Really what we're doing is changing some of these dates in August for the data retreat and, and the admin retreat in order that we could do this district-wide PBIS meeting. So we did, we made a technical change that won't affect anything on the actual calendar. So I do recommend approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
By Hanson, second by Maple. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I just had a question. We've already approved it. Anything we need to put in the motion to, do we not approve the original calendar?
Yeah, but we're altering, but you already approved.
Okay.
So like I said, it's a, it's a technical change.
Got it.
Were there any nays? I didn't see your hand quite fast enough.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trying to make up for that missing 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Item 12B, discussion, impossible decision, approval of second reading for new policies, 5215, 6108, and 7540.07.
Yeah, these we, we've already looked at. I did separate these out. Pretty straightforward. I do recommend approval.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Zebrow, a second by Baumann. I'll slow down. Any questions?
Can we put all three together? Do we have to do them separately?
I think it's second reading, I think.
We can do it all together.
I think so.
Can I do, can I do?
Do we have to do them separately?
Yeah, it's posted separately.
All right.
We should, we should talk about them separately, because the board asked for me to bring back the full whole policy.
Okay.
Which is why I separated them.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So we're doing the, we're going to friendly amendment to do item number 12B.
Yes.
Second reading of a new policy, 5215, missing and absent children. So that accepted
No, that is right. We do have the old ones in now.
So, yeah, so I'm recommending approval of B, which is multiple policies, five-two, one-five, six-one, oh-eight, seven-five, four-zero, point oh-seven.
Oh.
And then the split out is C.
C and D.
Okay, I'm sorry. We, I, I misunderstood what had to be done separately.
Right.
I thought each of the three had to be separate in twelve B.
No, twelve B you can approve if you choose to.
So back to the original motion and second.
The discussion and possible, we'll have a second reading.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twelve C, discussion and possible decision approval of the first reading for the new policy fifty-five, forty point zero one, investigations involving suspected child abuse.
Yeah, this is recommended by Neola to make the change to a Neola insured policy. So what, and the board knew that last time and asked for the existing policy, which is the first link, five-five, four-zero point oh one. That's the existing policy with the, actually, the current policy is second and the recommended policy is first. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Just switched that around in my head. So, so the recommended policy is first, and that's why this is a first reading. So this would have to get brought back in April. So you can see that it's a much more condensed policy. It is new, newly updated with statute four-nine point nine-eight-one of Wisconsin statutes, and Neola signed off on it. It's in conjunction with policy eight-four-six-two, which we do have as an existing policy, and it has been updated in twenty-twenty-one by Neola.
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second it.
A motion by Gorman, second by Zebrow, to approve the first reading of new policy fifty-five, forty point zero one. Any questions?
Yeah, the question I have is, is why are we eliminating where it defines what abuse is with A through I and?
Because it's been legally recommended to do so.
Oh, really? Okay.
All those things are covered in chapter forty-eight, which I think are references.
Of the statutes?
Right.
I think that I remember something about a discussion that if it's more general, it allows the, um, the investigation to take place, whereas if it's, if there's more things that are specified, there's this assumption or presumption by one or more people that, oh, well, that must not be covered, because it doesn't say it.
Oh.
Is that? Matt, I would defer to you. Is that?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, as it reads right now, you know, in the event of a law enforcement or social services investigation involving allegations of child abuse under chapter forty-eight, which, chapter forty-eight consists of all the things that, that would fall under the category of child abuse.
Yes.
To your point, it's very broad.
Yeah.
But, but yet, you can point to a specific allegation, and is it in chapter forty-eight? If it is, then it qualifies under a policy.
Right. That's right. That was my understanding. I didn't word it as well as you did, so. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We'll bring this back in the same format next month.
Thank you. Item twelve D, discussion and possible decision approval of policy revision for twenty-four, fourteen, human growth and development.
Who did that?
What? They find stuff everywhere.
Oh, that's a good one. Thank you.
That was really good.
Well, if we're going to do that, do we have an audio of one of our other board members, one of Webber's book?
It's just audio.
Who, Mike?
Yeah.
Where's your photo?
I, you can go on the Facebook page and watch. I watched all you guys.
Oh, really?
Did you watch mine?
No.
I didn't know.
With my dog, Chetzer? Come on!
All right, no.
On the Facebook, they, they posted an announcement.
Those kids must have thought mine was really boring.
They posted, you know, what?
We heard about that.
If I, yeah.
We did not hear about it.
No, we didn't. Twelve D, approved. Discussion and possible decision, approval, approval of policy revision for, um, policy twenty-four, fourteen, human growth and development.
Yeah, we brought this back, even though we could have approved it last month, and it was a good, there were good questions from the board about this third last paragraph about a citizens advisory committee. So we did check with our Neola rep about that, and they're fully confident it can be handled through C N I, that it can be handled under the auspices of C N I, even with the wording that exists, which is, I think it was the word "shall." So a citizens advisory committee shall be established.
Okay.
So, yeah, yes. So I do recommend approving the policy as written with the understanding that it would fall under C N I. Mr. Way and I have talked about it, and we would set up a rotation of how, and the constitution of that committee and, and the items that they have to check in with.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Zebrow, second by Kaiser, the approval of the policy revision. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen, new business, discussion and possible decision approval of the administrative guideline eleven-hundred, superintendents' absence and/or unavailability from the district.
Yeah, there's a associated policy with this. We don't have this guideline in place, but I do recommend that we put this guideline in place. What it establishes is if I'm specifically unavailable or absent or incapacitated, that there's a direct action, court administrator that's in the district to make decisions, supervise the appropriate action, inform me if I'm available, that sort of thing. We have associated policy with this. It's something that I've discussed with some board members. It should be in place. With Mr. Way being in the district now, his experience as a superintendent, C N I, T C R, multiple years, I do believe this is the right time to, to make sure that this is in place. I've talked to Rob about it, and he's very comfortable being the person in that position.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Barnes, second by Hanson. Any questions?
I have one, not related to this guideline, but others after it.
Yep.
Could I just ask after we vote?
Yes.
Hi.
Yeah, my, maybe future agenda. I just, I printed all of our policies when I came on.
I wanted to make sure where you are on here.
Three years ago, I printed all of our policies, and so when I was reviewing, preparing, I was going through, because I make notes that I've, you know, reviewed that or whatever.
Yep.
I didn't see it. So do we have other guidelines that have been passed by the district and that are available?
I think if we could, I, I can answer that or start getting an answer to that on number fifteen, future agenda items.
That's, that's the right spot for it. Great.
Yep, so.
Perfect.
We put it on.
Because it's not agendized, otherwise.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen B, discussion and possible decision approval of the W I A hockey cooperative renewal for twenty-twenty-two and three, and twenty-three and four.
I do recommend the approval of this renewal. This has to do with the co-op. I'm just taking a quick look at it. This does need to be approved by the board and then a signature by the board president. So essentially, the co-op is changing a little bit. It'll be a new look next winter, like it says in the background. So D C R versus Mero Mozenee, Wasa East, Wasa West. Wittenberg Burnhamwood is going to be a new addition. Marathon is no longer going to be part of the cooperative. They didn't have players in the cooperative, so, you know, there's a changing agreement. So I do recommend approval, and this is the, the girls' hockey co-op that just won the state title.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Being a part of the state, the current state champion, W I A hockey cooperative renewal. And by the time it's done, we'll be the three-time state champion. Thank you.
We have a motion by Hanson, who's second. Zebrow. Dr. Lehman, Wittenberg Burnhamwood is about the same distance as Stratford. Does Stratford have a girls' hockey team?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Well, then they wouldn't be part of the championship.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, yeah.
That was fast.
That's good, Pete. Item thirteen.
I was waiting for that for a couple of days.
Thirteen C, discussion and possible decision approval of the fall twenty-twenty-two Start College Now and Early College Credit Program applications.
Yeah, I'll just give a general overview of both, this has had a lot of names over the years as a, a twenty-year principal myself, Start College Now and Early College Credit, but essentially, it's, it's students that are in high school receiving college credit while they're still in high school. We do that extremely well. Credit to the high school, credit to Dr. Lehman and his staff, increasing those sorts of things. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings to the parents in our community because of how well this is done. So I do recommend approval. We can jump into it individually, but it's pretty straightforward in the breakout spreadsheet that's in there. There's not, nothing really that's an outlier.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Zebrow.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Seconded by Gorman to approve thirteen C. Was there a question?
Yeah, the eighteen, maybe I've asked this before. Eighteen college credits, that's cumulative, is all a student can?
Right.
That's, is that state statute?
That is correct, yes.
Has that changed?
Well.
Yeah, well, before.
This came out to two years.
Four or five years ago, before it was like unlimited. Like this one a lot better, because it limits how much we can, we have to spend.
My, my niece nephew went into U W Madison around forty.
Yeah, it's, right.
And you get these credits in.
It's a question.
A P credits?
Yes.
So you can get A P credits in addition to the A P?
Yeah. And that's why a lot of our kids have a year done. Some of them have two years done by the time they leave, because they're taking a lot of our classes. Our classes don't count for this, because they're free for our students.
That's an important point. Thank you, Dr. Lehman. That, when I was talking about the, okay, so there's a lot of pieces of this. So N T C dual-credit courses, those are courses we're teaching, and students are receiving high school credit and N T C credit, almost all of which transfers to U Ws. That has nothing to do with this. This is completely separate of that. So a student can do eighteen credits here and then do every dual-credit course that's offered that they choose to at Mozenee High School, and that's how they get that year, that two years of school done. And then you have A P on top of that, advanced placement on top of that.
A big one that we pay for is C N I, and we looked at, we met with, with N T C to try to bring them here, but it is way too expensive to bring all that equipment at a high school, so.
Yeah.
Good. We have a motion and a second. Pete, did you have any?
No, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen D, discussion and possible decision approval of classes with enrollment of fifteen students or fewer.
Yeah, this is something we've been doing since I have come to the district. It's something I did in, in previous districts for multiple years, but the policy listed two-three-one-two in terms of class sizes, before we jump into the details of this and some explanations, I'll give a broad overview. We're not listing all of the classes. There's many classes with multiple sections at the high school that are, are filled to the brim and have two to three to four sections. We're not showing all of that, because there's no policy for that. Right now, the policy we're working on is classes that are under fifteen that we're choosing to run, that we need board approval for. We have some additional information, some historical information that I think you'll find very interesting. We'll do that at the end, okay? So in terms of this report, long and short of it, we are recommending running these courses that are listed here in a lot of different ways. If a class is listed as having two, it's going to run with Fab Lab One, which makes sense. You can't run a class of two. Nobody does. So you need to put those things together, and that's a pretty common thing in, in high schools. I did it as well when I was high school principal. A P Physics Two, I'll strap down to those, and then I'll just go with questions. They run this every other year. That's a good thing to be doing, because it's a way to keep those numbers up. Running classes every other year is a solid way in order to, to, to establish a good sequence of higher, as higher numbers as you could possibly get. Not everybody chooses to do that. Integrated math, just be aware, that's part of the intervention system. So what that means is there's six students sitting there right now, but it's probably going to be twenty-six or thirty-six or something like that, based on how students finish up this year. So if they're struggling in math as they come into the summer, then that, that is going to be a place. That's what it means when it's part of a tiered intervention. It means that, oh, I had trouble with algebra. All right, you're going to need to be in this, so we can build up your skills and get you ready to actually be successful in algebra, okay?
I have a question on, I, I'm sorry to go back on the A P Physics.
No, that's okay.
And this might be a question for Dr. Lehman. In the handbook that the students have for signing up for the classes, is there something that's noted for them and the parents on the A P Physics Two that it's, just make sure that if you're a junior and you're like, oh, I'll wait and take it next year, and then, oh, it's too late. Is it noted on there that it's only offered every other year?
Our plan is to offer it every other year, but if, for some reason, there's a large number of kids, they can still sign up for it, and if it's a crazy large number, we'll run it. But if it's, if it's small, under fifteen, we're just not going to run it unless it's every other.
So you still show it?
Yeah.
Available every year?
Yeah.
So you would, okay.
If you have a bunch of kids that still want to take it, we want to provide that.
Okay.
But if it's under that policy, we're not.
I just wanted, wanted to make sure that a family didn't miss it somehow.
So from a, from a staffing perspective, you run it every other year, because you want to, you want to run that course. We don't want them to take those early college credit classes. In other words, go to another university to take it. We want to teach it. The best way to do that is have higher numbers. That's the way you can do that. The calculus, the A P calculus, that's pretty standard and straightforward, in terms of running those classes. A P Studio Art is going to run together. So when you see those classes running together, Intro to Art and A P Studio Art, they are lower numbers, but running them together is close to that fifteen number. Ag Four is dual-credit course, so that's, it is recommended to run all of those courses. Same thing with D C Marketing Principles and, and, D C is dual-credit, Accounting Two, those are all dual-credit courses. So smaller classes, we are recommend running them. And just remember, those dual-credit courses, that has nothing to do with what the board just approved. Those are things we're teaching, and we don't want those students to go somewhere else to get them, because we pay separate for that. There's multiple ways for students to earn credit while in high school, post-high school. There's a revised curriculum in Construction Two. I'll have some more information about that at the end. So we've had some big jumps in numbers in the tech ed department, but I'll get to that in the end, because the Construction Two class, it, it'll be better understood when looking at the aggregate, which is in the end. Engineering, they're going to run these things together, which makes sense in terms of the size of classes. Same thing with foods and food science. It's why they're clustered together. We're excited about Introduction to Teaching. It's actually a dual-credit course, and it's our second year of running that with relatively healthy numbers. So these are students that have some interest in, in being educators. So that's not being done in many districts. We're excited about that moving forward. We've talked about Chinese in previous years, and similar numbers to previous years, a little down, but similar, and we are recommending running it the same way next year as we did this year, even though the numbers are a little less. And I'm going to jump right down to this continuous improvement. Kristi, if you could punch on that link right there, the Helping with Needs Around Our Community in Central Wisconsin. Dr. Lehman and I had a discussion after I saw this initial document, after I saw this initial document. And to, to have a, a better overview of how some of these things work out over the years, one of the things to look at in terms of manufacturing, there's been a substantial jump over three years and even one year in terms of that manufacturing class, which we're excited about. There was a presentation to the board earlier this year from that department. That's a really sizable jump. Take a look down at Construction 1. That was a class that was barely running. And it's, you know, mathematically, I, I know it's called order of magnitude. That's a huge jump from three to 40. So the Construction 2, that's where that comes in. So we could do this actually for every one of these areas and extrapolate things out with depth. But I, this definitely gives some better understanding about what the other side of that is. There's multiple sections in Construction 1 and building that up is something that is actually going on. So those numbers are actual numbers. And there's a little explanation with Introduction to Teaching, which was in there about the 13 students. So any questions about any of this at all? Yes.
Am I correct to assume then that that STEAM position that personnel approved last month has over 15? Or is that not going to be in this year? It's going to be in next year?
The STEAM position is a middle school position.
Or doesn't go to high school too?
There might be a class or so in high school. We'll, we'll be working that out as we go. But that is mostly a middle school tech ed position. I'd say 10 out of 12 sections, something like that. So you figure 12 sections, six a semester. It's figure about nine are, are middle school and two to three are high school. That's pretty.
And that's helped with our overloads. We will have no overloads at the high school for the first time in many years.
Right. And that's, and that's where that, that tech ed teacher with that tech ed certification handles some of those courses.
I was just wondering, because that STEAM course at the state convention, that was a big, heavy topic that was hit on a lot.
Eighth grade middle school is always around 23, 24 kids. And then seventh grade is always in the mid twenties.
We're excited about the alignment. We're excited about the, the vertical alignment, meaning between the two buildings. Other questions? We have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Zebra, second by Gorman, to approve the classes with enrollment under, of 15 and fewer as presented by administration. Any final questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 14, WASB report.
That would be me. And we are looking at not a lot scheduled right now. Thursday, April 28th online, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM there is for new board members. And in our region, five marathon would be having it at the Marathon High School Library. That would be April 20th, 7 to 9 there, whoever is new on the board. And in May, we do have some spring workshops coming up. As far as I know right now, no dates. And nothing says, so that's all. That concludes my report.
And then I asked to put in, this was in the black folder for last conference that I attended, and just a list of things that I highlighted and questions to come back.
Okay, so this is ours to take and to look at.
You mean the one in the, in the?
This page here.
Folder?
In the black folder.
We'll have an update for you actually in Board Connect with that. Sorry. So I know Dr. Pittman's working on the first part of it and I'll be working on the second part of it. But we'll have that ready for this Friday.
And Diane, this was the conference you went to down at the Dells, correct?
Yes.
Is that the legal, WASP legal?
Yeah. It was interesting because what, what it shared was a lot of school districts that currently have things that are going on in cases and a lot of it's covered by what they're doing and a lot of things that. We weren't in any of the cases, which is good.
Between Dr. Pittman and myself, we'll complete the document and make sure you have it available at your weekly Board Connect this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 14B, CISA 9.
CISA 9, hopefully your minutes are in your packet and the transition is on.
All right, excellent. Item 15, future agenda items. Mr. Hanson.
You have that written down?
Yep, administrative guidelines. It's, it's, your timing is impeccable. I just wanted to put it in future agenda items. I do have an email from Neola that it's been sitting in my email, but it, because I knew it wasn't for this meeting. But it is specifically about administrative guidelines. It's something that I've been editing and updating in the background and wanted to, I just brought one to you tonight. But there's a whole sequence of them that are, that sit in the background, meaning they're aligned to policies. They're guidelines that are aligned to policies. And I do have some recommendations based on some of that work. I've reviewed all of them and we don't need all of them, but I think some of them could be very helpful. But I'll, it's something that I'm actively working on.
I have one other thing. I don't know if it's really considered an agenda item, but more informational, maybe for you to communicate in your office. If families reach out to the district about, so internet service. So we live out in the boonies. We had DSL that we could get one or two meg speed. We just hooked up Starlink. Elon Musk getting 250 meg. So it's really a game changer for students and families and just being able to, you know, do their studies, researching or whatever. My kids would not have been able to do that with the internet that we had available. So if families do reach out to the district, and I know there's broadband grants that they're, they're expanding facilities in the, in our district, but this is something that can be done. It's amazing. And it's.
How much is that a month?
99 a month. It's incredible.
All right. I will look into it. I'll work with our technology administrator, Christie Help. I wasn't aware of that, but I, I do appreciate you bringing that.
And the worst families in the neighborhood. We're just thrilled.
And it's 99 a month?
Yeah. I'll swivel over near the tone of day in those areas too.
Any other future agenda items? Hearing none. Item 16, the board will, 16A, the board will go into closed executive session pursuant to section 19.85, parent 1, parent C of the state statutes for the purpose of considering performance evaluation data, employment and compensation in section 19.85, parent 1, parent G of the purpose, for the purpose of rendering advice from legal counsel. Is there a motion? Motion by Hanson, second by Zebra. Roll call, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Yes.
7:05. Six or seven minutes, yes. 7:05, everybody.